Good morning. I called order the May 9, 2023, meeting of the Salina County Board of Commissioners. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Shadwick? Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may comment on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission?
Rosemary Maes, Salina, Kansas. Last week, you guys discussed some bills that were in the Senate that you didn't quite understand, and I just want to let you know that next week, Tuesday, May the 16th, the Granny Brigade is holding a town hall meeting with Senator Karen Tyson will be the guest speaker, and if you're all invited to come and ask her those questions that you were debating about last week, it's at the Carver Center, and we inviting all of the public to come to that meeting and ask her questions that you may have not understood on the bills that you were talking about last week.
Thank you for that update, and you said that was Senator?
Karen Tyson.
Karen Tyson?
She is the chairman of the Tax Committee in the Senate.
And she represents which area?
We, she was in our area, yes.
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock at the Carver Center.
And what date was that?
And that will be a week from tonight.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for that information.
And it is open to the public.
All right, thank you very much. It's nice to hear that type of thing. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. And today's consent agenda is approval of tax roll adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of the public forum agenda, approval of payroll, approval of county commission minutes for April 25th, April, or, excuse me, approval of memorandum of understanding and talk group authorization for the Union Pacific Railroad Police. Number seven is the approval of proposed change orders eight and nine for courtroom project and the disposition of property. Are there any items that any commissioners wish to pull from that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll poll number six for just a short question.
Okay, and there's also?
Mr. Chairman, on the public forum agenda, just a note, we had a last-minute addition of an executive session, and then that issue has now been resolved, and so we will not need that. So we're back to sort of the original agenda, so I wanted to make that note regarding the public forum agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Hay?
Yeah, this is just a short question, probably for the amendment, the approval of the understanding of the talk group, is this just to authorize different agencies to be able to communicate with the railroad so if we have any emergency vehicles or anything that we're making sure they don't get blocked from going to wherever they need to go?
Yes, so as part of the installation of the new radio communication system, we've refreshed all of the memoranda of understanding with all of the different agencies that have access to that, so we've approved agreements for McPherson County and Ottawa County and Ellsworth County and so forth to be, basically listen in on our emergency traffic, and so this would be the same thing with the UP Railroad.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that clarification, I will take a motion from a commissioner regarding the agenda for today.
So moved.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we approve today's agenda as adjusted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries four to zero. We will move to the action items. Item number one.
2023 Mental Health Proclamation with Deanna Riles and Christina Neto from Central Kansas Mental Health Center.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Whereas Mental Health Month provides an opportunity to raise awareness, promote mental health education, and encourage individuals to seek help when needed as and whereas one in four adults in Kansas will experience a mental health challenge in any given year, and one in four youth aged six to 17 experience a mental health disorder in any given year and?
Whereas surrounding can impact if, how, and where a person's needs are met, which in turn affects mental health and?
Whereas stigma and discrimination associated with mental illness can prevent individuals from seeking and receiving proper treatment and?
Having safe, whereas having safe, stable, and healthy home and community sets a foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health and?
Whereas greater public awareness about mental health can positively transform attitudes about and towards people with mental illness, making it easier for our citizens to seek help for a mental health issue and?
Whereas early and effective intervention, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and live full, productive lives and?
Whereas mental health is an essential part of our overall health and wellness, and it affects how we think, feel, and act in our daily lives. We recognize that mental wellness deserves attention year-round.
And the, to go further, it says, therefore, I do proclaim May 2023 Mental Health Month. I call on citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Salina County to recommit in increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, and to recognize the necessity of accessible and appropriate mental health services for all Salina County residents, given under my hand this night day of May 2023, signed by the chairman. Do you have any other activities planned for your, your Mental Health Month?
Right now, we're just trying to focus on our same-day access, which is getting people into mental health services faster, and then also our crisis services, which is letting the public know about how to access those.
Okay, very good. I'll take a motion from a commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I move we proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries four to zero. If you wish to come forward, I'll present you with this signed proclamation.
And thank you very much for all you do for it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two.
Brazos E-Ticketing Application with Brad Bowers, Information Technology Director.
Good morning. We have a request in front of you this morning for the purchase of the Brazos E-Ticketing Application from Tyler Technologies. The application will replace the DigiTicket application that's in use today. This application will be used by Sheriff's Office deputies in the Operations Department at the Sheriff's Office when they issue citations. The total cost of the application is $54,975, of which the sheriff's portion will be $24,537.50. The city of Salina's portion of the cost will be $30,437.50, as noted in the chart below, in addition to details about the application. We are asking for permission to expend $24,537.50 for this application. Funds were requested for this project in the 2023 TIP budget. I included a chart with the breakdown of the, of the cost of the application and the different modules that will be, that will be included. Alternatives for actions, approve the request as presented, or deny the request and have staff go back and do additional research. Staff recommends approving the expenditure. The current application called DigiTicket has become problematic. Support for the DigiTicket application has become a problem for both the city of Salina, Police Department, and the Salina County Sheriff. The Brazos E-Ticketing Application will seamlessly interface with the Sheriff Records Management Software. Tyler Technologies has both of those applications, the Brazos E-Ticketing and the, and the Sheriff's Office Record Management Software. And the expenditure for this application is also a cost share with the city of Salina. Budget impact, $22,912.50 was requested by the sheriff for this project in the 2023 TIP budget, but the project was not approved for funding in the 2023 budget. The city of Salina did not have funding approval for this project at the time Salina County finished up their budgeting process for 2023. The city of Salina now has, has approval for moving forward with this project. We believe we have enough money, we have enough dollars in our TIP budget to pay for this expenditure. You may recall that money which budgeted for the purchase of new desktop PCs for the new jail in, in the 2023 TIP budget, the desktop PCs will not be paid for out of the TIP budget, leaving that money available, I think. We did use about $10,000 out of the desktop TIP line item for the procurement of the MSISEC CrowdStrike application earlier this year. This would leave approximately $35,000 in that line item that is being requested to pay for the Brazos E-Ticket expenditure. The sheriff has also identified $1,675 in funding toward this project, and that $1,675, I'm told, is the notice to contact function that's in this Brazos application, and, and that really is, is kind of a citation that, that they give to people that tell them they need to contact a county attorney or, or a law enforcement agency. That's my report.
Brad, I noticed that this is not exactly a 50-50 split.
No.
There are a couple, three items that the city's responsible for, so, other than that, and it looks like it's parking, I don't know what that means necessarily, or the, the $1,000 for the setup and configuration of the hardware handheld. Those things that we already had available for the sheriff, or?
With, with DigiTicket, we, we do have those. Now, this, this, this hardware may be a different brand, and it may be something that works better with Brazos, and that's probably what, what the, what the expenditure is for. And there will be some training included in that as well. But these, these devices that are in the, that are in the vehicles, they need, do need to be configured to work with the new software.
Well, I certainly support the collaboration that's going on between the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department, and, and many other city and county agencies for that matter, but we're working in the right direction, so. Other comments from commissioners?
Brad, little understanding, excuse me. The Sheriff's Office did request budgeting this year for this move?
They did.
And it was not approved? Was that not approved because the city wasn't ready at that point?
That's, that's my recollection.
So this would have happened?
Exactly.
Possibly next year?
I got the TIP budget, budget request from the sheriff, and we didn't have, we didn't have a partner, so to speak, at the time, at the time we did our budget, and so this didn't get advanced to you folks for approval. So that's, that's the, that's the story. But now, we, we have the, we have a partner, and they have been approved for funding for this project, and it, and it is needed. The DigiTicket application has become problematic for both agencies, so.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there further questions or comments from commissioners? Any public comment before I bring this back to the commission for action? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-91 as presented.
Second motion. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-91, the Brazos E-Ticketing Application. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number three.
2023-95 Progress on Commission Vision with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. On January 31st of this year, the commission met in a facilitated study session to develop a vision for the county departments for 2023, and as part of that, you gave us some action items and some specific tasks that you wanted to get completed, and so since that time, we've identified task forces for the specific tasks, and we've identified champions for each of the action items, and the champions have been working on refining those actions into something that's a little bit more digestible, and then the task forces have been working on their assigned specific tasks. So, we, today before you, we have the first report from a task force, and we also have the proposed revisions to the actions, and so basically, this is just a check-in with the commission to see, did we get it right? Are we on the path that you set out for us, or have we strayed off that path a little bit? And so, we, we would like to know if, if we're meeting what you wanted, and also have a question regarding timeline. It is May, which is quite a ways into the year at this point. We didn't even start this process until essentially February, because it was January 31st when the commission met, so the question has arisen whether maybe this should be kind of a, a year and a half vision versus a one-year vision. I think staff would, would be a little more comfortable completing some of their actions in that kind of a timeframe, or if you do want everything completed this year, we would probably need to identify some things that, on the sort of regular work plan, that, that would not get completed in order to free up time to make these things happen. So, so that is the request. You have in front of you a memo from the task force on childcare as an employee benefit, and also the comparison of the original action, proposed action, and then some steps to try and complete that action. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but mainly looking for commission feedback on those items.
Well, from my viewpoint, we need to stay on track and move forward for certain. Other commissioners have comments or questions?
Well, I, I, I believe that, that success is what we want, and if, if the best chance for success is extending the one-year work time, that's, I think I, I would embrace that. The only problem I see there is we'll be going into another focus in December, January for the next year, and this thing will be extended on, so how do we, how would we look at this and still go forward with our new focus?
So I think the proposal would be to, rather than to try and do something in, in December or January, maybe try and do something in, say, September of '24, to have everything kind of geared up to launch in, in '25, would be kind of the, the proposal, just sort of extend out your processes as well as the department's process, but that's all subject to, you know, what availability and so forth.
You know, in looking at your weekly updates, that, you know, they, they're moving right along. I'd, I'd say that, just like Commissioner Vidrickson said, is, you know, let's keep on the task and keep on working the way we are, and I tell you what, it's, I think it's moving right there. Anything else? I'm not sure that all the public is aware of, of all the things that we've had before us and what we're trying to accomplish, but several of them have been, so, but in keeping with policy, this is a, something that we are going to approve an RFA on, so therefore, if there's any public comment, I would take that at this time.
Norman Manus Salina, when you say vision, how long-term vision do you have? You're only here for maybe four years, so you're kind of restricted on your vision because you'll have new people in place. Your hands are tied in a way.
But I assure you, if we don't look on out, we leave the next commission in poor position if we don't try to have some sort of a vision like we are going to still be here. We have to assume that our staff will still be here. Commissioners will come and go as elected officials assert and so, but thank you for your comment. Anyone else? I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-95 as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-95. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, the motion carries four to zero. Thank you. We'll move to item number four.
RFA 2023-93 Courtroom Audio-Visual Project with Todd Heuchmuth's Court Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Heuchmuth.
Good morning, Commissioner Vidrickson, other commissioners. Before you today, we have the District Court request for action for audiovisual to be installed in three of our courtrooms, two of the new courtrooms being built right now, and one existing courtroom, which would be courtroom 304, Judge Young's courtroom. We did have five vendors that submitted proposals for this, ranging from bids from $137,500 up to $180,889.41. In addition to the proposals that were submitted, we also looked at the warranty service that was included with these, and when I say we, Judge Johnson and myself were the primary representatives from the District Court that reviewed all proposals and then scored them accordingly. You have before you the, the vendors and their proposal and warranty service. Do you want me to read each one of those to you, or?
I don't necessarily need that, no.
Okay. Out of the five vendors that submitted proposals, the proposal from Hops Sound scored highest by both myself and Judge Johnson, and we determined that by not only their price, but their warranty package, which included three years of parts and labor, plus after that warranty expired, another two years of no labor expense. And then when we checked with references, other courts that they have done work for, they had a very good, I want to say recommendation favorable as far as their work of service, their customer service to who they're working for. They've recently done work in Ottawa County, they've done the courts in McPherson County, Harvey County, and were praised for their work. As far as alternative actions, you can accept a proposal from Hops Sound for a total not to exceed $152,365.40, or reject all proposals and provide staff with further direction. Staff recommendation is to accept the proposal from Hops for, again, the total of $152,365.40. This is based on their experience installing similar project in other district courts, and presenting a impressive warranty agreement as well. Budget impact, again, the cost would initially come out of the County General Fund, however, Salina County then would be reimbursed back the cost of the project from the Office of Judicial Administration, from ARPA funds that the Office of Judicial Administration had received. That came about, about a year and a half, almost two years. That came about, about a year and a half, almost two years ago. The Office of Judicial Administration had asked District Courts for, to give them an estimate if they wanted to improve stuff in their courts, you know, what would the dollar amount be? Saline County submitted a proposal for four hundred thousand dollars to them. They in turn requested for the state twenty million dollars. When they got their bid award back, it was only two point four million. They then awarded us one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars out of that. That's what's going to be paying for this project, plus the remaining balance of that will also go towards other, I'll say, court technology improvements such as data lines, phone lines, installation that's going on with the current court project at this time. And that would also be reimbursed back to the Office of Judicial Administration. So at this time, I ask that the Commission approve the recommendation of having Hops Sound do the install of the three courtrooms on third floor.
Todd, first, let me just say that a pat on the back for the way that you went about this and seeking out, even though Hops wasn't the cheapest number here, you went out and found out about Hops and the other companies and found out why their number's not quite as cheap, and why we should go with them. And I like that when it's presented to me in such a fashion that this is. When I first started reading this, it really jumped out at me, and I go, whoa, one hundred and fifty-two thousand come out of the County General Fund? Well, then I read on a little further. We're going to get the money back. So everything's cool, as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, sir.
Other comments or questions from Commissioners?
A quick question, Todd. We'll have a total of four, five courtrooms?
This project, this project will cover three. They'll cover the two brand-new ones that are going to be installed, and then also Judge Young's courtroom. So this will cover three courtrooms, the one hundred and fifty-two thousand.
And the other courtroom?
Eventually, I'm proposing, in the coming years of coming to the county, through the technology improvement.
Okay. Todd, I noticed there is two of these companies that said no warranty presented. Is this, is this a one-and-out deal that you, you know, did we go back and ask them if there was any type of a warranty? I know there's a fifteen thousand dollar difference between, you know, the low bid and the bid that, you know, that you picked. But did we contact those companies and say, hey, do you have any warranty at all on your equipment?
I did not. I did speak with Judge Johnson. The one that was in consideration was, you know, looking at Wilson Security. Judge Johnson was pretty adamant he wanted somebody with the experience. And not just experience, but having a, by doing courtrooms, having a positive reference, but this, more of the special part of doing courtrooms. And Wilson Security had never done courtrooms. They've done some stuff in courtrooms, but they haven't done a whole total AV equipment in courtrooms.
Okay. Anyone else?
I do have one other thing I just want to add. I'd like to thank Phil and Hannah for helping us with this. Because I tell you what, Judge Johnson and I, when we were going through the process of how to do this, I don't want to say we were blind, but we were lost, and Hannah really put us on the right track.
Well, it's nice to hear that. And as the old saying goes, that's why we pay them the big bucks, you know? Are there any public comment? Anyone else wish to comment on this? If not, I'll bring it back to the Commission for action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve RFA twenty twenty-three dash ninety-three for courtroom audiovisual project.
Second motion. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA twenty twenty-three dash ninety-three courtroom audiovisual project. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Todd, before you leave, can you give us just a really quick estimate of when our new courtrooms are going to be available? Or is there such a number?
Well, I'll say, I'll say for the first courtroom, I can give you a pretty concrete first, the first week of July. The courtroom, which is in the southwest corner, should be open and ready to go. Now, the courtroom where the current county attorney's office is, I'm going to say that's going to be in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, even that, that's pretty fantastic. I mean, we got notification, I don't know, around the first of the year, somewhere in there, and that we started these projects and had to go to bid, et cetera. To have them available this quickly is an amazing job on everyone's part that's involved.
And I would say if anybody ever wants to come take a quick tour of what they're looking like right now or during the project, give me a call. We'll go do a quick walkthrough. So you're more than welcome.
We can do that, although I'm trying to stay out of the courts. Personally. All right. Anything else? Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to informational items. Item number one.
Roden Bridge bi-monthly update with Darren Fischel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Morning, Darren.
This is our bi-monthly update for the months of March, April. We sent forty-four total employees to eight different LTAP trainings, five of which we held at our facility. I'd like to commend Walt Reddick, Ted Smith, Larry Breen for completing the LTAP technical skills program.
And Doug and Frank also completed the technical skills program plus the supervisory program. We did help Human Resources move to the juvenile, old juvenile detention center, and we were able to hire two truck drivers. We completed the twenty twenty-four budget preparation, along with the department's seven-year equipment improvement program and capital improvement program. We did do some trash pickups countywide. Next slide, please. And along with that, speaking of trash pickups, we did have some Kansas Wesleyan students pick up trash during the spleen, spring cleanup days on Waterwell Road between Centennial and Burma, and also Burma Road between Waterwell and Farley. They had planned on doing some spring cleanup at Dry Creek, and it was too wet to work in the creek that day. So we diverted them to Waterwell Road, and everybody appreciated what they did. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And so they were, they were given snacks and water from the, the spring cleanup people. Appreciate those, those kids and what they did for us. Next slide, please. We did receive the new Ford F-350 approved by the Commission in March. We did tree trimming in five rural territories at nine diff, nineteen different sites. This completes our tree trimming for the year. This is Burma Road north of Salinsburg. Next slide. Next slide, please. This is Crawford Street east of town. Some before and after. Next slide, please. This is a hedgerow on Gerard North of Hummerger. The property owner was, did, as we were doing the tree trimming, wanted us to remove them so he could build a new fence. Did provide the land to stack the trees on also. Next slide, please. This is an intersection at Centennial and Hedberg. There was an accident here earlier, or actually would have been late last fall, and we had gotten a request to clean the line of site out for this, this intersection. We got in there and got that done. We were able to get to all twelve territories and do some tree and brushwork this year. That's the first time that's happened in the fifteen years that I've been here, and that's due to the, the brush cutters, making the work more efficient, that the Commission has approved, and not having to go back and burn the piles. This takes a lot of time. This is a project on Fallon east of Burma. Next slide, please. If you look in that picture down at the end, there's a bridge project, and this is done in conjunction with engineering. Whenever we do these projects, we always look at what the county can provide to it to reduce the costs. Next slide, please. And these were just some entrance culverts that the Maintenance Division did. Next slide, please. You can see the bridge a little bit better off in the, off in the background there. Next slide, please. This is a culvert replacement on Hedberg west of Centennial. Next slide, please. This is a culvert on Smaller Road west of Holver, Halsted, completely plugged. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And this was also done in conjunction with the tree work on Burma Road, was an entrance culvert at some, these projects, we look at what we can do while we're there, the things that need detention. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is a culvert. There was a hole in the road. The culvert had failed. But if you look at the top of that picture on the left, there's a concrete head wall. Whenever we run into these concrete head walls, we remove them and, and replace the culvert, because they provide, they, they're very dangerous for the traveling public when, when they're impacted by vehicles. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Another concrete head wall removal. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We did repair a couple of small structures. This is on Cunningham Road south of Lapsley. That's a, a box, box, or wooden box culvert there. Most of these were built within the early forties timeframe, when steel was hard to come by. They used bridge plank to build culverts. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is a, we dug out a pond on Brookville Road for edge wedge to put on Brookville Road from Brookville to I-70. As you can see, the picture on the left there has a little bit of a drop-off. Burma Road's going to be due for an overlay within the next year or two. We'd like to get some dirt out there. That way, when the rock edge wedge is put there, it's, it's less expensive. Next slide, please. This is on Amos Road north of Mc, of McReynolds. As you see on the left picture there, the, the stringers aren't touching the back wall anymore. So we went in there and we shimmed that up, so it would touch there on Center Pier, and then notified Engineering to put it on the box list for replacement. Next slide, please. This is a broken stringer on Fourse, north of Rosehill Road. Heavy farm equipment usually causes these to break. Next slide, please. We went in there and replaced the stringers and put a wood deck on it, and notified Engineering also for replacement. But the wood plank you see there are recycled. When the, the Saline County a few years ago closed some bridges, we went in and salvaged all the wood plank off of those bridges, and that's what that material was used for. Next slide, please. This is on Armstrong Road west of Brookville. We had a large rock in the road that was presenting some problems because of the drop-off and where it was at on the hill. So we rented a breaker and went in there and removed that rock. Next slide, please. You can see where the rock was. As traffic was topping the hill, they were on the rock. And then right after that, they were just dropping off that ledge, because we couldn't get any material to stay there. Next slide, please. This is on Shipton Road west of Thompson. This is just a little ditch cleaning project. You can see on the left there, the culverts, the end of the culvert's completely plugged and not draining. Next slide, please. This is a map showing the amount of miles that our motor graders bladed in the last two months. We also repaired and replaced two hundred and eighty signs and posts. We completed the ten-year replacement signs for twenty twenty-three and nine, worked, nine road closures for the work crews. Next slide, please. This is all of the locations in, in the county that we delivered aggregate to. Next slide, please. And these are the miles of road, of rock and sand that we did within the last two months. Not a lot, because of the dry weather. We hauled five thousand three hundred and twenty ton of rock, one thousand six hundred and eighty-five ton of AB3, one thousand one hundred and fifteen ton of sand. And we have started this year's culvert replacement projects, and we're starting this year's construction projects. Next week, we have a soil stabilization project on Cunningham Road. The budget line items are falling within the normal parameters.
Okay. Thank you, Darren. It looked to me like you made several landowners pretty happy with some of those entrances improvements. It really looked nice. So thanks for going. I got a question on your very first item, where you sent forty-four employees to the LTAP trainings. That's just about the whole place out there, isn't it? Don't you just have around fifty?
Forty-four total employees. So.
Oh, so they weren't all Roden Bridge?
They were Roden Bridge, but it might have been one guy going to four separate trainings.
Got it. Okay. I was going to say, boy, we sent everybody to some sort of a trans. Kind of unusual. Any other comments from Commissioners?
All I want to say is hats off on the recycle and reuse. That was a, that made a pretty good project on that little bridge up there using those bridge planks. So, thank you.
And we didn't run into any issues of flooding digging that pond out?
No, no, not this time. We had better luck than we did on the last one.
I do appreciate the last email we received from you about aggregate use and the training that's ongoing with your crews. I, I really hope that that will help.
I do, too. We're, we're making attempts.
Thank you.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a classic case of working vis, visibly to, you know, keeping us informed instead of getting called on the carpet, and you've already done something, but that, that helps us. So I agree with Commissioner Wees, so. All right. Thank you. Before we go any further, I just want to say we have an abnormal amount of informational items today. We appreciate everyone's patience, for those of you that are down the line a little bit. So we'll try to move this along as fast as we can, but thank you for coming, and we'll go from there. Item number two.
North Central Regional Planning Commission update with John Shea, Executive Director.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, Mr. Shea.
Good morning. How do you do?
Good.
Good. I think I've been in front of this Commission before. I get mixed up, because I have twelve counties. And with going to all the Commissions, sometimes I get a little confused. But we did provide a short, one-pager here to just kind of summarize some of the work we're doing in Saline County, a little bit about the organization. The NCRPC is a little over fifty years old now. We celebrated our fiftieth anniversary in October. We've been serving a twelve-county region since then, principally. Currently, our programs are things like Homeland Security, which brings in a lot of resources to all our communities for emergency equipment, training, facilities, things like that. A very significant weatherization program. We cover forty-two counties, actually, not just our own twelve counties. And that's our largest single source of operational funding. We cover eight positions in the organization with it. We have a business development program and business finance program that's been very active in supporting businesses, helping them expand, helping entrepreneurs get started. We work extensively in community development with programs, like not just USDA grants, but the Community Development Block Grants, and we provide assistance in applying and administering, applying for and administering those grants for small communities. Saline County and Salina, of course, are better equipped, because they're larger towns. But a lot of the places we service in some of the northern and more remote counties are, you know, seventy-five-person towns. They don't have a lot of capability, and so we, we provide that at a heavily subsidized rate to allow them to get funding to, to do all types of work in their communities. And then finally, we have, and I always forget one of the five, and it switches every time, but we have Hannah? Do you remember? Okay. It will come to me in a minute. In the interim, I want to thank Hannah, who's on our board, who's just an absolutely fabulous board member. She represents Saline County and does an incredible job at that. Oh, and we have a housing program that spurred it, and that's been very active with things like helping people demolish old properties, so we don't have blight in certain areas, and also helping people relocate to our twelve counties. So in short, we have a lot of exciting projects we're working on right now. We just received a little over a million dollars in a SMART grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation to help, help communities like Saline County with assessing their infrastructure, particularly bridge infrastructure, using drones. So that's an exciting project. We also are doing some additional work. We'd like to develop geographical information system capacity to help our communities with planning and integrating their infrastructure and operations with the other counties around them. So that's kind of my dream project. It would be based in Salina. Our office, main office is in Beloit. But we also have a satellite office in Salina at the Chamber of Commerce. at the Chamber of Commerce. And so, that's where I'd like to house our GIS program if I can get the funding for it. So, I won't go through the details that are on the one pager, but partially because I, they're very detailed, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions and to say again, we greatly appreciate the support of Celine County and our other 82 members in the 12 counties. So...
Well, I'm certainly happy that Celine County can partner with the North Central Kansas Regional Planning Commission. It's, I've been to your annual meeting before and some of your other things. And by the way, Hannah, you are nominated to continue to serve on that board. So, nice going.
Right.
Your good work is being noted. But no, we enjoy being a part of that. We're happy to do it. And we know the service that you're providing, as you alluded to, particularly the smaller communities out there. I know that I've mentioned that two or three different times to our smaller communities in Celine County that call North Central Planning because they do participate in those types of funding projects that they were talking about. So, thank you for that. So, I will yield to any other commissioners who wish to make a comment. All right. Thank you, Mr. Shea.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Now, we can get into the business of potentially giving away money here. Call it that. Item number three.
Kansas Horse Council Budget Allocation Request with Justine Staten, Executive Director.
Good morning, Ms. Staten. And before you get going too much, I just want to say thank you on behalf of Salina, Celine County, and everyone for the hard work that you personally have done in your council and bringing this huge platform to Salina, Kansas, and Celine County. And when we talk about the River Festival and the Car Show and now the Equafest, those are three pretty diversified things that come to Salina, bring a lot of action to town, as our chamber people know. And it sounds like I'm doing your job for you. So, anyway, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Vidrickson and Commissioners. Appreciate your time today. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at the economic impact and the notes that I made. As some, hopefully everybody's been aware that we've been in Celine County, Salina, since 2020. We really appreciate being able to have our event here. The community is wonderful. The county commissioners, the city commissioners, everybody on board, we certainly appreciate the enthusiasm that comes with that. And I come before you today to respectfully request a little stimulus to continue us going. That stimulus helps us not only to just do our event, but also to grow our event. And it allows us to try some new things each year, whether it's adding a new day or adding a jumbotron, et cetera. We do allocate the funds that we receive from you back into the county facility. And so, you know, we want to keep that all local, keep that money local and growing. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions. If anyone has any questions on how we operate or what we do, I can quickly run through some of the economic impact results for anyone that's listening that may have that curiosity. So, results from 2023, we had 102 demonstrations going on at our event. We had 108 vendors with booths there. We had 14,000 attendees come through, so box office, horse participants, and so on. We had 245 competitors. We had 37 Demon Exhibit riders. And we had 308 horses on premise. We had awarded through our competitions $24,270. And so, we made a lot of people happy there. Our, we had about, from what we tracked on box office sales as well as horse participants and vendors, we covered 30 states across the U.S. We had attendees from 30 states. And the economic impact reported was 1.3 million for the community.
Refresh me, Justine, the number of years that we have left on a contract with, is it four years?
Yeah, four more years till 2027.
And I want the public to know that the fact that the money that you're asking for as an appropriated funds from Celine County actually will be less than a net wash for the county because we're going to be able to, or more than net wash, I should say, because that amount of money that we appropriate to you goes back into the leasing rental of the buildings and it doesn't even cover that. So...
Correct. Yeah, we still pay more rent and we cover our expenses there as well.
So, it's one of those type of donations. So, other comments from commissioners?
You know, all I can say is 1.3 million of impact and over a six-year average, we're looking at one and three-quarter million dollars. That's pretty good for a $5,000 asking. I tell you what, I think any of the organizations would be happy to give $5,000 to get that type of a economic impact for the city of Salina. You bring in that much. We appreciate everything you do. I know I was at Equafest this year and I mean, it was fantastic. Great group of people. A lot of the vendors were, they, you know, they're happy to see people. So, thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you. On that note, I do do a vendor survey and I get a lot of great compliments from the vendors about your community and the city. So...
And I hope that they are also noting our improvements that we've been making, the investment that we've made with the Expo Center to help not just you, but every event that comes over there. So...
Absolutely. And we certainly share that information forward to other horse communities. So...
All right. Well, thank you for coming today and we will put this into our account for our upcoming budget sessions and we'll go from there.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you, Justine.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number four.
Salina Area Chamber of Commerce and Military Affairs Council Budget Allocation Request with Renee Duxler, President and CEO.
Good morning, Ms. Duxler. And you don't have to thank the Horse Council. We've already done it for you.
I know, right? I think it's great that three out of the four people presenting this morning for budget allocation or informational updates are groups that we work with and continue to support as well with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. So, thank you for having us this morning. We always appreciate the commission's support of what we're doing over at the chamber. I submitted some information. I was really excited about being able to submit updates about the ARPA projects that we have going on with you all and that ARPA money that we've received for economic and workforce development. What I realized is I failed to actually include information about the budget allocation request that we also would like to receive flat funding for. So, let the record show, we are asking for our flat funding of $35,000. $30,000 of that goes towards economic development programs and activities. And then $5,000 goes to the Military Affairs Council. And that's the kind of small but mighty group we have that does fundraising and support for our guardsmen, reserve, veterans, and military families here in Celine County.
If memory serves me, that is the same amount that we allocated last year, isn't it?
Yes, exactly. So, that is a flat funding request. We're not asking for any sort of raise in that. A lot of what I outlined in terms of the ARPA projects as well as the other chamber updates kind of covers a lot of that activity that we're doing in economic and workforce development. I'll also remind the commission that we have Project Open. That is a program that helps really serve small businesses and expansions with capital access. We awarded over 320 in loan capital in just 2022 alone to businesses that we're looking at starting up or expanding in the county. We know capital access is a huge barrier when starting a business. And so, that gap loan funding program in coordination with Network Kansas has been a huge help to our businesses. That's also a huge increase. We'd normally been doing anywhere between 45 and 90K in capital funding. So, we've really seen this sort of increase in activity and entrepreneurship and economic development. We're happy to continue to support that. And then, the other thing I wanted to note was I talked about the Imagine Salina campaign and the website specifically, but we just continue to see a lot of success with that. I think right now, I'm getting submissions on a weekly basis from Missouri, Oklahoma, Texas, Arkansas, people asking more about Salina and specifically the jobs available here. And so, that's why we're really excited to do the jobs connector to make sure that we're getting people to the jobs that we do have available here. So, recruitment, retention, all of that is part of that workforce piece. And as I've said to this commission many times before, we're having to recruit and retain in ways that we've never have before because of the jobs. And so, that is a lot of the work that we're doing right now over at the chamber. And so, with that, I'll kind of stand for questions.
Well, and that's a lot of the work that's presenting itself in front of you too because obviously the ARPA funds are going to dry up. They've been a real block builder for us in our community to get this thing moving. And we have gotten it moving in a big-time way. We, we being the Economic Development Organizations, the community, the Chamber of Commerce, the city, the county, and everybody, working Airport Authority, School Board, we all tried to work together and build on this. But now, it's, we're going to have to start up our own engines type thing and be a leader type thing. So...
Absolutely. Well, I think all of this activity will continue to grow with Salina and Celine County, you know, increase our tax base, increase, you know, our property owners, all of those things that drive revenue. So, hopefully, all of this work continues to be sustainable then.
All right. Other commissioners with comments or questions? All right. Well, thank you for your presentation.
Appreciate you all. Thanks.
And we'll see what we can do come budget time.
Thank you.
Let's move to item number five.
Salina Community Economic Development Organization Budget Allocation Request with Mitch Robinson, Executive Director.
Mr. Robinson.
Well, you're going to hear, it's kind of a repeat here of what Renee was just saying, but pleasure to be with you all. And Commissioner, your comments about the team working together, all the organizations, and that was something I was going to stress that, you know, it's been moving so well. It's a well-greased machine, whatever you want to use for vocabulary, but everybody's working together. And that's why we're being successful on these projects, why we're able to go out and get those funds from the folks in Topeka, the folks in state level. They know we're out there. Many of you all made the visits over there, calling on those legislators that have been able to get funds for the community. But let's talk a little bit more about locally here. And I always like to use the word investment. The county is investing in these organizations, these efforts because you, just as you've heard from the horse group, there is a return. And we like to think about that. And so, we're going to just jump in here. I do want to mention Rob Xline and Brian Schwartz are the two board appointees that you all have on the EDO Board of Directors. And they're doing a great job. Brian's just came on in January, but he's hit the ground running as moving right ahead. So, I just want to talk about a couple of projects. One that we will be for you next week concerning an energy project coming out of Texas. So, the company will be here and we'll be having a discussion about the impact on the county. Phil and I have met with them numerous times, talking about their interests and what they're doing here. So, you'll get the full story from them. You should have gotten an invitation for groundbreaking tomorrow. Farmer Direct Foods up off of, they're at Al Cranberry, is going to do a 12,000-square-foot addition onto their building, additional to hold more finished goods for their new customers they've been able to acquire. And that'll get started, as I said, here at 11. Continued efforts, we're continuing to work with Swans. You should have gotten an invite to the ribbon cutting on the 19th, Friday, the 19th, for their project to unveil and give a tour of the facility. So, we're continuing to work with them. One Vision, Great Plains, Cabota, multiple activities there. The Bex Hybrids is going to be a new company. We'll be making, going through the city for industrial revenue bonds next month, but they will be acquiring additional property up on 70. Part of that will be annexed and part of it will be not annexed because they'll be doing extension. We'll be working with extension and the K-State on test plots for their seeds that they grow. So, we're excited about that project. That's going to be a little over $22 million investment in the area. We worked with Geoprobe this past year, Superior Contracting as well. So, we're continuing to work on that. And Renee touched on a lot of the things that, again, we as an organization and as a part of a team effort, our housing efforts, the childcare situation here in the county, which I'm excited to hear you all talking about it for your own employees, small business startups. We had our second, we can now say second annual Charlie Walker Pitch Competition that was held. And this past year, of course, you all joined in on the partnership to hire a legislative liaison for the community, which I think has paid well, very good dividends for the community. So, flipping through, budget-wise, we are asking for the same amount, $35,000 as well. This is the third year. If you all recall, we work off a three-year budget cycle. So, this is 2024 will be the third year. And this is the... No, I'm trying to think of how many cycles we've gone through. Now, we started in 2015. So, we've gone through, my math's not too good. So, anyway, we've gone through several cycles, four cycles?
Three, I think.
Three, yeah.
This will come up coming forward.
So, we'll be looking at coming back to the county, negotiating, talking about the next three years. And we'll be doing that, obviously, with the city, Airport Authority. The chamber provides us, of course, our housing is part of their donation into the investment in the project. So, I'll answer any questions you all have now, but it's an exciting time right now. There's a lot of activity going on. The housing investment that's being worked on with the city and their developer is still in a process of negotiating their contracts. But I believe that we'll start seeing some activity this summer with that. And that's, that'll be a big impact for us.
I just want to remind people that the Economic Development Organization operates under the same rules of the Kansas Open Meetings Act as the other entities here in the community. And the public is able to go to their meetings and listen to anything that they might have to say monthly when they have their meetings. So, these meetings are open to the public. So, and I do attend them. As the chairman of this meeting, there's the liaison. So, I am somewhat familiar with everything they're talking about. So, but others may have questions that... Nope. If not, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your hard work, you and Robin both, in regards to what you do for the community and how you spend our money. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch.
We'll move to item number six.
North Central Flint Hills Area on Aging Budget Allocation Request with Julie Govert-Walter, Executive Director.
Good morning, Ms. Walter.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging. And we're pleased to provide information about the programs and services that we provide here in Celine County as well as the 17 other counties that we are responsible for providing services. Really appreciate the focused attention on aging services here in Celine County. Our agency is very fortunate to have a collaboration at the Senior Center right across the street here where we have staff who are providing case management and assessment and a variety of services that are available to people in Celine County. And actually, those staff also reach out to other counties. So, we know that there's a lot of coming and going from Celine County because of those services. I want to sort of give you an update on some of the exciting things that we're working on right now. One of the things I wanted to let you know is our Sunflower Fair is happening on, here in Salina, at Tony's Pizza Event Center on Tuesday, September 19. This has been an ongoing, we call it the premier health and wellness event in the heartland. So, it brings people from throughout our region and throughout Kansas to Salina to have a great day of getting trustworthy information, fun, and of course, a lot of important things that they can take home with them that will help folks live a better, more active life. This is open to the public. We'd have a sit-down lunch. Cost is $20, only $20 until July 5. And then after that, we're asking for $25. But the point is, I just want all of you to understand and appreciate the value of this particular event that we bring and have brought to Salina for the past 30 years. We're just really grateful for the support that we have for that fair and grateful for your support to make it happen. The other thing... The other thing we're working on is a awareness and fundraising event, which is fun, with the Stiefel Theater. We're having a new event called Kansas Sunflower Seniors Have Got Talent and we're highlighting folks who get to be on the stage of the Stiefel Theater who are over age 65. And that's happening on September 18th, the day before, the evening before the Sunflower Fair. We are working on the details of that, but we're looking for talent now, so if you or somebody you know would like to be on the stage of the Stiefel Theater, give us a call. We'll be glad to put you on the list. Actually, there's a selection process, so I can't guarantee, but, you know, we know you have, we know you know talent when you see it. I also want to make you aware of some of the lesser-known things that happen through our agency. One of the things that we do is we have a regional subsidized housing called Housing Choice vouchers that are available in Saline County and the focus is on the rural parts of the service area. So I just want to let you know and folks that are listening that if you are a landlord or if you are somebody who is in a certain income level and would like to apply for subsidized housing, we are able to help here in Saline County. And it's not something that a lot of folks know, but we are able to do it and we have a great group of people working on that. We also provide tenant-based rental assistance, which is help with security deposits for utilities as well as those rental deposits, something that not a lot of people know about, but I wanted you to hear it today that's happening. We do a variety of other programs and services and you've got our fact sheet, which describes many of those that we've done, well, in terms of the facts of what we did in fiscal year 2022. We, our investment here in Saline County totals a little more, actually $76,000 more than $6 million. That's the estimated economic impact of the federal dollars that we're able to bring for services here in Saline County. And we are asking this year for slightly more than we asked for last year, I think it's right around $1,200 more. And why would I be asking this? Well, it's because Saline County's population's increased and our formula that's approved by our Board of Directors, based on 18 counties, has a population factor as well as Saline County's valuation has also increased, so that's part of the formula and means that, hey, we're asking a little bit more money from Saline County based on our formula, which includes all 18 counties. I would be happy to answer any questions, but before I do that, I want to acknowledge Archie Riggs, who is currently a member of our Board of Directors. We love to have Archie and he's one of our staunchest volunteers with our Senior Health Insurance Counseling for Kansas program and we love and appreciate him and we are right now, because we're coordinating the Senior Health Insurance Counseling for Kansas program throughout our region, we're looking for more folks like Archie, there's no one else like him, but we do need more shift volunteers, so if anybody out there would like to apply to be one of our Medicare experts to provide trustworthy information about Medicare to people in Saline County and beyond, we're looking for them now. Any questions?
Well, I'll just say that as someone who has entered that senior citizen arena myself, the things that you're describing, there is a lot of help out there for the senior citizens that might have difficulty navigating, whether it be health insurance or healthcare or fun things to do, it's really out there. Visit our Senior Services Department over at the old courthouse, they have action going on over there every day, including meals and so forth, and so it's, there's really opportunities and we might get a barbershop quartet tryout up here for your, I don't think we'd make the grade. So any rate, there's lots of opportunities for the senior citizens to take advantage of these things that are available, so I encourage you to get in touch with our organization, Saline County Senior Services, and if they need to go on, I, you know, from there.
And folks can find out more about the programs and services available from North Central Flint Hills by connecting with us either through a phone call or from our website at ncfhaa.com.
Other comments?
The event you're having on the 19th for, what time does that start?
It starts right around, well, it starts at 8:00. We want people to pre-register before and come in and have a good time and then it goes until 8:00 to 4:00 is the official time.
And that's where again?
It's at the Tony's Pizza Event Center.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, hope to see you there.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? If not, thank you for coming over and visiting with us and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number seven.
Jail Project Update with Philip Smith, Haines County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, commissioners. So in your packet, you have quite a few pictures this time of the progress at the jail. It is, I think I sound like a broken record, but it's fairly amazing every two weeks when I'm out there and see all the progress they've made. There's a whole new building up out there, the Annex Building that the commissioners approved last Wednesday, they had all the framing up and the siding on and half the roof completed, so I'm sure it's enclosed in by now. They're continuing to work on the housing units for the inmates in the jail portion of the building, but the office portion of the building is nearly complete and we have started scheduling the final punch list for walking through those pieces of the building. The only change order for the month of April was credit, so things are going well there and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I'm with you on these pictures, it's amazing that the progress is being made and how quickly it's going and if I recall, November the 2nd is when we're going to have our open house for that and that's still online, you're still on target for that date, so everybody mark your calendars for that one because that's going to be a pretty neat event, I think. We're looking, so looking forward to it. Other questions or comments from the commissioners? All right, thank you. Anything else? We'll move to item number nine.
Item number eight.
Excuse me.
County Administrator's Update.
That's okay, I'm happy to skip right over because I really, I really don't have anything to...
Phil, you got anything else to say? Well, yeah, I do, but it's under a different heading, so I apologize.
No, that's perfectly fine, Mr. Chairman. I really, I don't have much of an update this week. I'll just mention that I've attended a couple of meetings with the state within the last week. On Thursday night, folks from Kansas Office of Broadband Development were here in town at the McKenzie Center across the street from the library, did a part of their broadband roadshow. Salina was their 26th event around the state and so I think we were well-represented there. And then yesterday, the state had their, the budget meeting, a budget update and so went to that and that's always good information about the budget process for the succeeding year, so that's really all I had for this week.
The budget process that you went to, was that presented by Ryan from Butler County or?
No, no, this is the state. It is the Office of Municipal Services and the Department of Administration, Stacy and Lindsay, thank you.
Totally separate from the KAC budget, things that are presented, okay.
These are the folks who are in charge of that form that we have to complete and submit to the state every year, so.
I understand. Anything else, anybody? Questions there?
Not done that.
May I move on to item number nine?
Sure, Commissioner's comments.
I just have one comment. Last week, I attended the Senior Center Meals on Wheels Appreciation Dinner, helped serve during that time and, boy, I tell you what, we served over 100 to 100, maybe 125, 130 meals that night to the people who actually deliver the Meals on Wheels and you're talking about a special group of people. I tell you what, it takes a lot for those guys to go out, day in, day out, rain, snow, shine, whatever it is, they go out and deliver those meals and it was an honor to be able to help serve that night and take care of those. So I want to thank those people and I want to thank the senior service for, or center for putting, you know, putting the meal together and on that, so it was a fantastic night.
It's interesting you point that out for those that are senior citizens that are still able to volunteer and do things, it is a heartwarming thing to see them volunteer and do those things that they do and help others that aren't as lucky to be able to move around and so forth, so. Anything else for anyone?
I would like to say thanks to the Granny Brigade for bringing a state representative into our community that we can maybe get some of our questions answered. I applaud you for that action.
We intend to have more representatives.
We'll move to item number 10.
Announcements.
Anyone have anything?
I actually want to make an announcement. So in 2022, we had legislative redistricting and so we weren't allowed to make changes to any maps outside of what they had passed in their redistricting. So 2023, we can now start combining any adjacent precincts that have similar districts, so we will be, I'm actually working on it right now, proofing some of that, but we will be sending out new notice of disposition cards to everyone to show there are new precincts because those will be renumbered. The law requires us to renumber, so when you're used to being in a particular precinct, it's going to have a new number this year, so we will be sending those out in the next couple of weeks.
Do we have, speaking of that, maps, do we have new maps printed yet for the redistricting that we did within Saline County?
They're on our website, we have, people are able to get those, but they will be changing, obviously, with combining some of those, but it, we obviously did the commission districts last year too, so those obviously won't change, but, you know, the number, the precinct number that you represent might be different, but the district lines will not change.
Okay, that would be the end of our action items and so forth and informational items. We have done away with our executive session, so I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved, second.
Been moved and second that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries 4-0, we're adjourned, thank you.